So you got everybody who's here?
Yep. Let me go and make sure I got Ed, Lee, Cliff, Ed Marshaun, Jamie, Josh, Don Bracken, Chris Dallas, Carmack Pollard, Stephen Welch, Don Hillhovey, Tucker Howland, Campbell Sutton, Sean Cabral, and Sean Perrin, and John Zabiki.
And me.
And you. Well, you're with me up in this.
You're always with us. So let's get started. We could go around the room. Does everybody feel comfortable that they know each other? Or does anybody want to introduce themselves? Steve, you're here as the representative of the select board?
HTC.
HTC, I agree.
Don.
Don, I knew that.
That's a whole different level of it.
Alright. I don't think we need to. I think everybody knows each other at this point. So I'm going to pretty much turn this over to Ed Marshaun. And let Ed run things in or introduce Cliff, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Great. Thanks, Ed. Just my background, I've been serving as a 40B advisor to the Nantucket CBA. I also worked with the Nantucket CBA on previous 40B projects, including Beach Plum and Abrams Quarry and Saichem's Path. And I just wanted to give a little overview for today's meeting. I've worked on probably 160 40Bs, both for ZBAs, advising ZBAs, and representing developers. Work sessions are designed to create a less formal opportunity to discuss plans, always in a civil manner and without the restrictions of a public hearing. Today's topic is clearly focused on design. Two facets of design, the site plan and the building design. We're all aware that there have been a number of non-design issues raised, many of course which are influenced by design, but we're not here today to talk about those issues. We've, or the board, has retained Cliff Bomer. Let me just tell you a little bit about Cliff. Cliff's a registered architect. He's the co-founder and president of Davis Square Architects. Davis Square Architects is a medium-sized firm based in Somewell, Massachusetts, and its special, one of its specialties is the design of mixed-income and affordable multifamily housing. Cliff has served in this role as a design advisor to municipalities and to ZBAs. Many times he reviews DHCD, public tax credit proposals on behalf of the state, but what's important is he's not just an advisor, he's a registered architect. His firm has worked on some of the very sort of interesting affordable housing developments, both in the Commonwealth. So what we wanted was a fresh look in.
Is that?
The feedback, apparently interference from the speaker, so you're supposed to keep it facing down.
It is facing down.
Yeah.
Pull it down. There you go.
Right. So he's here to sort of take a fresh look. He was able to walk the site, visit the site this morning before he came here, and he has a general sense of other developments also. I'm only as good as I can mature of other 40B developments. Cliff studied architecture at MIT and then did his masters at Harvard Graduate School of Design. So we're pleased to have Cliff here. Cliff, this is really your meeting. We've asked, the board has asked Cliff to basically take a look at the existing site plan, the existing building types, and offer his views. Cliff has developed at least three different sketches. These are viewed as pieces that will generate discussions. I think we asked Chris to identify some of the issues that might be involved with the plan as presented, and what some of his ideas about addressing some of those issues might be. So I'll stop talking. All yours, Cliff.
Okay. Hi. I'll give a little background on how I approach it. Said, I think probably most importantly is what Ed started out with. Actually, I was charged with really doing some sketching, trying to take a fresh look at it, not having any baggage from previous negotiations or anything, and really take a look at it. My method was, of course, to run through all of the materials that I could get access to that has been done so far, but really just to pick up some reference points more than even a launching pad to start studying. So I think most importantly, once I did realize there'd been an awful lot of work done on specific building designs, as well as site plans, the last site plan, as well as a large series of sketches and studies, hand drawn, which are always a good way to kind of open up the discussion again, knowing that there was an awful lot of that going on, there was a lot more detailed looking at very specific housing types. And I think my conclusion was, when I sat down to draw, was kind of put the housing part aside, other than kind of basic dimensional requirements that I know through my own practice and from the work that I was reviewing, basic kinds of sizes of buildings. But I found that the most productive use of my time was actually looking at the way the site is organized. And through that exercise, I think I learned some things about some of the bigger issues related to intensity of use on the site, the impact on neighbors, things like that. So most of my commentary really is not so much about buildings. I'd certainly thought about it, and I guess I'd like to say that I'm very open to questions because I know I won't say everything that I've been thinking about. I think probably on that notion of the site plan, are we going to be able to project?
And one thing I thought that might be useful, Cliff, before you go through some of your ideas, just so that we all have an understanding of. Chris, could you just show us the base plan right now? I know the ZBAs vary. Maybe five entrances. Oh, maybe Don.
Don. Just very basic, Don.
Okay, this is the last of the site plans that were submitted. It was possible or alternative. But in general, the cottages, 40 cottages are in the front of the site, condos are in the back of the site. Sixty total condo units in this configuration in five separate buildings. We have a sewer main going through, which sort of dictates some of the design layout. And in this scenario, we're most concerned about the parking going around the perimeter. We're asked to look at some different alternatives, putting the parking, you know, more in the center, trying to work around that. We have several alternatives that we looked at. The community building, the clubhouse, is located right in pretty much the center of the site, and we have 25-foot buffer all the way around the perimeter. And in the front, we have between a 15 and 70-foot faucet in the front.
Okay. Any questions? And again, the developer at the request of the ZBA did prepare some alternatives. I don't know, just show us the one that you prefer.
Well, this is our preferred. The board has been concerned about the five condominium buildings and was looking for us to break them up. So we developed, we went through a series of, I think, developing like 12 different alternatives. We have a preferred one, which I'll hold up in a second, but we broke it into eight different building types. And each building type essentially is comprised of, we call, four modules. So they're going to be essentially stacked, a townhouse and either a one-bedroom or a studio apartment, either on top or this way or that way. So this is sort of our preferred site plan, where we've responded to bringing some of the parking up to the front, but also still left some of the parking back to the west side of the property.
Okay. I just want to give a base. I think it's fair to say that although there are a number of alternatives presented, none of them sort of reached the point where the ZBA felt sort of comfortable with those alternatives, and then we said, hey, let's try a work session. Back to you, Cliff.
And I'm going to maybe start with a couple of comments here.
These knives are, is it just me or are they annoying?
Not just you.
I haven't been putting them on the floor.
We should turn them off.
I mean, we can hear, aren't we serious?
Can't you just turn them off?
No. No, you can't turn them off.
I can't stand it.
Sounds like Facebook or something.
It was just that I wanted, alright, sorry. It's okay. So a couple of comments that, just about what kind of launched me in the three different studies I did. And I did, I think it's kind of normal for architects to try to look at three different versions of things, try to make them very different from each other as a way to get more questions to bubble up to the surface. But I think I started, probably the strongest motivator at the beginning was feeling that the site was really bifurcated and kind of abruptly bifurcated, and it's, you know, right along that line, you see one type of development in the front of the site, and then you cross the line, and it's an entirely different kind of development in the back of the site. And so what I tried to work towards, even though I was looking at three different ways of trying to do it, is a way to have a more integrated site throughout the entire depth of the site, even though the site is wider at one end than the other end, that has certain challenges, and I'll explain it by a quick circulation where I did quote it, but for me, I thought, certainly before I started looking at specific housing types, I wanted to look at ways of both decreasing the contrast between the housing types. And it's very clear from the, even this diagram, the scale of the buildings in the back is just an entirely different notion of what's going on in the front. And if, once you start drilling down into that, it isn't just different types of buildings, because obviously big buildings can look great, there aren't tons of them on Nantucket, but there's nothing inherently wrong about big buildings. But the kind of contrast between the way that people live in this kind of building with their own driveway, easily definable private space, a different kind of hierarchy of privacy going to semi-public to public spaces, very different, very different ways of living on the same site. And to me, all of the development of the housing types is all well and good, but I think before, before I could really get comfortable looking much into the housing types, I wanted to look at ways of making a more integrated kind of texture of the site throughout the entire property. That was sort of the problem I put in front of myself, was trying to break down that bifurcation of the site and make. Well, I'll explain more when I look at the difference. So is everybody, since we don't have a projector yet, right?
No.
Okay. Does everybody have these sketches? If people don't, I've got more.
If anybody's.
So I'll quickly go through those, these different ideas, and tell you what I think the goal was with each of these. And then once I, basically, I backed into the density. So once I would work on a site plan that I thought was getting to be something plausible and interesting, then I could then look back and see what the density was from that. So that was actually how I approached density, more than units per acre. I was really just looking at the site and what I thought worked as plans.
And I think probably what we should do is let Cliff present each of his sketches, and then we can have discussion after that.
Okay. So the first sketch was, I think probably, and this, as I said, I had access to lots and lots of what has transpired, but I thought I would still go ahead and try a scheme that did concentrate circulation around the perimeter, even though I understand there has been some issues with it. The reason I still think it's worth talking about perimeter circulation is, it's my experience that I've seen neighbors, you know, when you're talking about the circulation of the perimeter, usually what the discussion is about is impact on the neighbors. And I've seen neighbors go both ways on that, but do you want somebody's? Do you need more of them?
There's a sound drive.
Oh, wait, I just gave it back.
Chris has.
Chris has the sound drive.
Yeah. Good luck. Might find it.
Chris lent me his phone. I can keep talking about.
Yeah.
I'll keep talking, but, so anyway, I've seen neighbors go both ways on that, is the impact from a family using their backyard greater or less than cars driving by to find their parking spaces? It goes both ways, and so I still think it's worth talking about that in the larger context of how sites get organized. Generally speaking, what, this was a first attempt at creating a more uniform texture across the site. In this case, with that first study, I still was showing the condominium units in the back of the site. Again, more than anything else to see what I could fit on that size of block within the development. And for that, mainly for the benefit of Chris, I think that the, I was using, rather than looking at the housing types that have been submitted, I was using a fairly standard townhouse module size, you know, somewhere around 18 feet wide by 30 to 35 feet deep. The reason I did that was not because I think that's the world's greatest housing type, but I do know that it does afford some very basic, simple attributes. For example, it's very easy to have a well-defined backyard that's your private space associated with that townhouse space. And I think I have seen, the developer has submitted some ideas about how to get bigger buildings and still privatize space. I did this because, to me, having done a lot of these types of developments, I know this is a way that I can get a good sense of how many units I can actually fit in the space that's afforded. Other, there was a mistake here when I did this first sketch. I completely spaced out about the easement, so there are a couple lots that are actually drawn, they're not in that final count. Another thing that I think is really important in a development of this scale, and it wasn't, I know the site plan that you have all seen before, did have a large green that was defined by the larger buildings. It wasn't really programmed specifically. I do think a development of this scale, particularly with a lot of bedroom counts that I've heard, does need a play space, who needs a toddler for children? Other, other goals that I add with this, and I just want to be clear, when you look at this, these are really diagrams, so I can get a sense of what's possible. So just, just because I've ticked off street parking spaces doesn't mean that I think you need that many street parking spaces, but it helps me understand what is possible with this kind of organization. A couple other points about this, this has one-way roads on the perimeter with a two-way passage that goes in front of the community building and the pool, and then where I put a toddler. Another small idea that's embedded in this plan was using, given that that space that is for the easement, for the utility easement, is by nature going to be relatively undeveloped, maybe it could be parking, but it could also be usable outdoor space. So it made sense to me for a couple of reasons to put the community building next to that basically free, open space that you get, that can give you more opportunities either for making larger sites elsewhere or providing other amenities in other places. The size of these lots, I'll point out something with this, number one, even though I think it's kind of wrapping back around and jumping ahead on all the way through number three, but the scale, a couple other important points, I think, is where I have those condominiums drawn at the back of the site, the far left-hand end of the site, those could obviously be gridded into lots that are similar to the size of the other lots, and they could be a single-family home, so they could be condominiums. So I drew them on here again, so I could get a sense of the kind of numbers that I think are possible. A couple other, I guess, reactions, and this is a kind of a small version of it, or it's the first step towards it. The, on the plan, the current plan, one thing I was trying to get away from are large parking fields, even though in this plan, it's still, at the back there, you still have, you know, space where you could do street parking, it is one-way, and then I had head-in parking on the other side. So again, this was a perimeter scheme, retaining the perimeter circulation, knowing that there are, there can be issues with that. In each of these schemes that I did, I retained that buffer all the way around the entire front, and assumed that this would also be buffered from the main road. So I think we can move to the next one. Unless, shall I run to all of them? Okay. And I will point out that to me, the, this is again, kind of an overarching principle, that the idea of making a more integrated site, I think also encourages people within the development to circulate around the development more. So that, you'll see, and this scheme really kind of pushes that a bit much, as far as maybe the size of the roads, for example, and as I've looked at some other developments here on Nantucket, this may be, is a little bit much as far as urban, a little too urban in the streetscape, but I'll still bring it up. The idea of this one is really create an extremely simple circulation path through the site, but then reversing it, so putting all of the, there is no parking visible on the outside of the site, you know, other than, maybe the parking spaces within the, within the individual lot. So let me rephrase that, there are no parking lots visible from the outside of the site. So the idea on this one was actually kind of go, kind of reacting to my own first scheme, and specifically dividing up the site into different sized lots that could bring the condominium development anywhere within the development. So in this case, you see the little threes are, those could be three in the condominiums right next to single-family homes. It's a good way to take advantage of these corners that are, can be a little difficult to design. In this one, I made a little maintenance building over in this space, when I was talking about the kind of urban nature. So on this one, even though, these are fully wide enough to be two-way drives, parking on both sides, and again, you don't, just because it's shown there doesn't mean you necessarily need it, parking on both sides, and the kind of messy lines there, also I included a planting area, so you could plant street trees. So what this was really about was making really beautiful streets, really well-treed streets with lots of accessory parking, but the lots themselves are big enough to accommodate the parking for, for the individual uses, whether they're condos or single-family homes. This one shows the community building right where you enter. And I think another thing that occurred to me at one point was that the original plan that I, you know, I'm calling the bifurcated plan, had all the condos in the back, and yet it's my understanding that the condos would be for maybe more populated by year-round residents. And in thinking about that, I reversed that, it kind of made more sense to me, or I think it can make more sense, to actually put the year-round residents at the front of the site, and, which I did on this one. So you can see here, there are three units, that happens to be a single-family home, but two units, three, two, wrapping around the common area of the community building, the toddler, and again, the shared open space is actually surrounded by the condominium buildings. And the kind of image I was thinking of is sort of homes around the town green, sometimes are the bigger homes. And one nice thing about what you can do with condominiums, I think in ways that certainly what I, I would say maybe if not typical, but a very common single-family home in the more remote developments here on Nantucket are pretty simple buildings, you know, simple boxes. I think with an advantage of a, of a condominium building is you can get a lot of articulation into an inhabited building that could end up with a bigger footprint, but still be a really interesting building. And perhaps a kind of building that, that's why I put threes along there, you know, more a little bigger scale building, I think, could be appropriate around the town green. And then putting the preponderance of the single-family homes are actually pushed out further, further on the site. This again, I think, is trying to take advantage of that easement, and knowing that it can't really be heavily developed in any way, making a two-way circulation again on this side as well. So to me, what this sketch represents is, is an opportunity for total integration across the site. You're talking about building lots, you're not talking about condos versus homeownership, but you really mixed it up and then provided a really strong infrastructure for both vehicles and pedestrians to really pull the site together in that sense. And I think something to think about is that when I look at 40B, and when I design my own 40B developments, which I have, is I think you have to, you want it to be an inviting place. When you think about integration, certainly the affordable population, but also just adding, I think if it can't pass the test of, am I enhancing the neighborhood, am I enhancing the town or the city, then you have to go back and keep working at it. So if you can't really believe that your development is inviting people in to come and share, you're really missing an opportunity for integrating the residents of that development into the town at large. Number three is another idea, it's a little bit of a hybrid, I guess.
You have one that says revise.
That's, this is one I want. So this is taking a different idea, and really trying to give a reference, an organizing, the previous scheme, I think you'd say the organizing element is really the street system, although I would say that certainly if you are doing streets that are that important, they really need to be treed streets with nice wide sidewalks. This is different. This is organizing the development around a natural element that also, you know, I'm calling it a rain garden, but it could be a planted area to deal with stormwater management as well as passive recreation space. I'm not a landscape architect, so don't ask me what kind of plants to put in there, but I would give this to my civil engineering landscape architect and tell them to make that work. But the idea of this is integrating kind of the full depth all the way back to here of green space, a kind of integrated green space of a community building, swimming pool, toddler, rain garden, you could have cross paths, I imagine, passive recreation. In this scheme, I put sidewalks only on one side, but I think I would make that a six-foot sidewalk, make it a really nice circulation path with stopping points around it. make it a really nice circulation path with stopping points around it. This one, I skinnied up the roadways. Because there's a lot happening in this zone, I think this roadway would be adequate for it. And what, what's different about this, I guess, is kind of obvious. So by pushing, pushing this down towards the bottom of the sheet, you pick up more space on this side. And this, I think this zone, each of those shows 20 condominium units with their own little, call this a parking. So the parking is largely hidden from the circulation all the way around, and yet very convenient for these condominium dwellers. But again, the, it's slightly more abrupt than really just every single lot being available for condo or homeownership, or single-family homeownership. But I thought it was, I thought it could be a really nice way to do it, actually. This is kind of its own little sub-district within the larger site, and still has a good street presence. And actually, one of the developments I drove through today has a little area that's kind of very similar to that. This is parking. I did take the liberty of putting parking on top of the easement, again, trying to take advantage of having that kind of free space, in a sense. And then did a ring of, of single-family homes. So the, single-family homes create the wrapper. It's kind of a U-shaped wrapper that goes around like this with these, with the denser condominium pieces in the, in the middle on the sheet north, actually, I'm sure that it is north. So anyway, I did those studies, not because I think I have the answer at all, but I do think that it did show me that there, that what the site plan really needs, it needs strong organizing elements. I think it needs, it needs to be built out in a way so that when, from end, from end to end, it feels like an integrated site. My studies all resulted in a density that was lower than the density I've seen proposed. That's partially because of single-family sites. I did up the size of them a little bit because I wanted to make sure there was enough space on the single-family sites for parking multiple vehicles. And you'll see there are little, just quick sketch ideas about how some of that could happen. I didn't do the single-family home layouts in any detail at all. So I'm not going to be able to answer everything about that. But generally speaking, my density went down for a couple reasons. That's one, I did make the, some of the lots bigger. I did, my buildings are all smaller than the, than the larger buildings that were on the proposed plans. And as far as the amount of open space, I don't think I actually added a lot of paving, except maybe in the first one, but that's how it works. As I said at the beginning, I backed in to what I thought was the right density for the site based on what I thought were reasonable site plans, not the reverse of having a number of units I wanted to pack on the site. And I really wanted to get a site plan that I thought could work for this site.
Okay, I, I think the best way to proceed is to open the door to questions first, and then comments. So, does anybody have questions about any of the alternatives that Cliff presented? And I'm sorry, I'm not going to remember names, which I'm going to do.
Sure.
Josh.
When you, you were talking about context and neighbors. Now, it sounded like you maybe were talking about the neighborhood surrounding the place, or were you just talking about the, this, what's on the page here, what you were designing?
That, yeah, that's a good point. When I was talking about that, I was specifically talking about impact on immediate neighbors. I wasn't talking about the overall pattern of development.
Yeah, so, so for instance, it wasn't a consideration that it sits in a lot-two zone? That your neighbors all have two-acre zoning, and?
Well, I would if it were 40A. I mean, if it were, but no, I didn't, actually, because it's, as we all know, for better or for worse, I mean, 40B kind of writes its own zoning. So I didn't look at, from the, the context of existing as a right development.
And if I could just make a comment on that. Again, that's always a concern of neighbors. You know, I look there, my acre is two acres wider than yours. Obviously, if a developer could, could develop within the existing zoning, he wouldn't be doing a 40B, because it's a possibility of 40B, and the cost of doing 40B is providing four or five units, and having a limited dividend restriction on the project, and having more retaped, and being subject to a regulatory agreement. So all 40Bs, by definition, are built at a higher density than the density that would have been allowed had it been a residential zone. Many 40Bs, or some 40Bs, are built on non-residential land where there really isn't underlying zoning. But very often, those will exceed any residential zoning that exists.
Yeah, a follow-up question. So, so on density, it just seems that this density is onerous for a 40B. It just seems it's very, very packed. And when you look at the bedrooms, I'm looking at the third plan with eighty-eight, approximately eighty-eight units, so that would be about 200 bedrooms. And that's a lot to put on 13.5 acres in Nantucket.
And I wouldn't argue against, sorry.
Yeah.
Eighty-eight units would have, you said 200 bedrooms?
Yeah, 200, 220.
More than that.
More than that. Well, the 100 units that, that was, that we were looking at there had 256 rooms, 256 bedrooms, gee.
I thought we were at the top.
Yeah, I think it was 256 with the 100 units, so I was just sort of...
I thought it was 285.
Okay. Well, there's only been a lot, generations of this.
Well, it's an important point, because everyone's doing math.
Yeah.
Well, basically, bedrooms do matter, right? They are the, because you could build 101-bedroom houses.
Yep.
But it's not going to happen, so.
Another question.
Can I ask, these road layouts, are they drawn with the state minimum 40-foot layout? Or are they, we're expecting to already have a state waiver for a smaller road layout?
There are no state rules that apply to the design of the roads, to the best of my knowledge.
Well, you have to have a minimum road layout for a public way?
It's just local.
It's just local?
It'll be spelled out in the rules and subdivision rules and regulations. But again, 40B, a developer, remember, has a right to ask for waivers. Technically, they're called exceptions to all local rules.
But I, I think we had Van from back there that originally asked for a waiver, and then mine decided the last plan did not ask for any waivers in road width, Don.
Uh, yeah, we're not asking for that 40-foot waiver from the town.
Well, that's if we go with that plan.
No, no, I'm saying the, the idea is...
They agreed to a wider road than what they had originally shown.
That we voiced concern about.
If that hits on the final point. I think you were next, and then we'll come to you. Oh, was that on the point of the roads?
Yeah, I mean, because I'm sort of hearing you say that it really doesn't matter if they want to use a 10-foot roadway to get around. I mean, it seems like it has to be...
No, didn't say that.
Excuse me, I'm just saying, from what he was saying when we were asking about the road widths and his responses to it, were making it sound as if, not that it is, but I, so just for clarification, say, you, you need to have some viable two, if it's a two-way, there has to be some viable width, right?
Let me say, let me clarify what I said, perhaps I wasn't clear enough. I said a developer has the right to ask for waivers. Not a guarantee. So what always trumps any waiver request is the fire department saying, "This doesn't work for me." And rarely will a town board go against what the fire chief wants. So it, it has to be reasonable.
I'm sorry, I, I guess you weren't getting my point, so we'll just move on.
Well, I just wanted to make the point that I think we were pretty clear that we didn't want to give any road width waivers out.
Right, and just, like I said, it just sounded very confusing when you're going to, when someone brings up a question such as a, you know, being a neighbor, and the response essentially, to my way of hearing, and I could be completely wrong, obviously I am, but to my way of hearing, it was like, well, you have to remember, this is a 40B. They can pretty much do whatever they want, regardless of your neighbors, or it's a 40B. So you, and so I just wanted to make sure that we are still on an open field for design, and we weren't going to be just sort of, what I hear often in the public is, well, it doesn't really matter, because a 40B can do whatever it wants. And I haven't felt that that was the case. So I just, I just want to, to move away from the, always using that as the backdrop.
If that were the case, we wouldn't have gone from 156-unit development to now a proposed 100-unit development with one alternative that was 88 units. So again, ZBAs have a very difficult job on 40Bs. It's not like a planning board. A planning board has very clear rules and regulations, and there are conditions under which you can get variances to that. So they're in this sort of zone where it's more gray than black and white, and the ZBA ultimately has to make the best decision it can. So it takes into consideration the waivers that have been requested. And they'll use their judgment in terms of whether a 40-foot road is necessary, or maybe a 38-foot road under certain conditions would work. I think you were next.
I believe that in all the plans I've seen, the easement was covered by lawn. I'm just wondering if it's, if it's allowed to pave over it, because that could become more cumbersome if it needs to be accessed.
I have a question. Do you have to answer it?
Yeah, we, we believe it is, that there are roads already crossing that easement in several locations. Our original plan, and we have to cross it two times no matter what. The latest plan, again, we, like, you know, like you said, it was pre-open space. That's why we configured it with the back of the lots putting up against it. But, you know, we're allowed, it's our, it's our land, and obviously the town has easement rights over it. As long as we don't interfere with those rights or do anything that's going to jeopardize integrity of the, of the pipes that are there, or they're future use of that easement.
So do you think parking is okay over it?
I think so. I mean, we've got several roads, like, as I said, you know, that cross it already. Satcham's path crosses it, and they may have some parking over it as well.
It, it's a good question, and it's, it's a question that should begin sooner than later. I just emailed town council to ask for a copy of the easement. We'll review that to make sure, to, to understand what the limitations might be on doing anything to all of that easement.
But can I ask a clarifying question on this?
Yep.
Not really on the road width issue, but I distinctly heard you, I thought the double, the two-way with parking on both sides plus a sidewalk on both sides, that's going to be 40 feet.
Pretty much.
So one of your schemes does indeed have 40 feet.
Yes, it does.
And none of these schemes are etched in stone. We're here to discuss them, so.
No, and I should say, to, I mean, to your point, when I, I'm not civil engineer, but when I design plans like this, and I give them to my civil, there are very strict state codes, ENFPA, there's a fire code that we have to follow that looks at the size of the equipment, whether they have outriggers on it. It, it's a, it's an important code, really important code.
But that, that code would still apply even at 40Bs, correct? Which is really only my point, is that there are overarching legalities.
To the degree that it's a safety concern, I would think it could very well apply to 40Bs.
I mean, I've worked on a number of 40Bs where it's actually being accessed or being a curb cut on a state road. With 40Bs, you only get the right to ask for, because that's in the local rules. You don't get the right to ask for Title V changes, Weapons Protection Act, or Mass D, Mass Product Transportation requirements.
Going back to the easement, so, and this question, we're done. So the force main there is currently about four feet under, and when you strip the top side off, it'd probably be up places three feet. And so that's pretty close to that force main for, you know, putting any kind of surface over the top of it. And I know Mr., David Gray was very concerned about just the two roads that were going to go, go across it, and I'm just thinking that parking, we really, and I understand that we're going to run by the town, but I'm thinking the town is going to say no, so.
Well, I mean, yeah, that's just looking at that one option. And there's a good chance David might say he's uncomfortable with it. If we agree on a different plan, and we don't have to do that, then that seems to make sense not to do it, if that's the case.
A follow-up, in the sense, do you, for instance, that parking, would it really need to be paved? Could you leave it in pervious, or pervious surface?
Yeah, you could.
Maybe, maybe not.
Well, sometimes, yeah, the, the loads might be greater if it's not paved. The paving could spread the load out, so we'd have to take a look at that. You know, and that type of detail work would also be in conjunction with a sewer consultant, who's also, you know, working on the other aspects of the sewer design, so.
The four-unit buildings in the schematic and in some of the others, what, what's this square footage assumption?
Well, again, dude, I was really just using a planning tool that I use, which is a module that's about 18 feet wide by 32 feet. And usually, if you're making a three-bedroom, whether you can add a piece of, you know, one-story piece, have one bedroom at the ground level, bedrooms, bedrooms upstairs.
I'm just trying to figure out what, what those compare to one of the buildings that you've got.
Well, it's, each module would be 576, I think it is, on the ground.
So 12,000 square feet, times four is 5,000 square feet, not including the basement.
I can also add that basically the modules we've been using are roughly, they are 18 feet wide, and in the realm of 32 or 35 feet.
It's pretty typical for this level of planning. I have other comments, I mean, in general, is that appropriate?
Are there any other questions? Let's get through the questions.
Yeah, okay, right.
So would you say that in the new sketches, have you changed the amount of ground cover per lot? It's about the same ratio?
Well, again, my, my sense was that if the, because if, looking at the original plan, it is very dense, especially because a lot of these single-family homes have, you know, four bedrooms, five bedrooms, and imagining that you want to be able to park multiple cars without necessarily doing it in tandem, I increased the widths. And not in every single scheme, and, and, you know, the thickness of my pen is a foot and a half, so these are really sketches. But I did increase, I think the average width in the existing plan is like 50 feet. Yeah, and I did some at 60, I did some at 65. It, it varied, I mean, it, you know, I'm not the architect, I'm not the civil engineer, so these are what I call fit plans, so that I know what kind of universe I'm dealing with. So it was my sense that a, a large bedroom, you know, a multiple, three, four, five-bedroom home should be able to have more than one car that's easily parkable on there. And I know tandems can have two cars, but it just, they feel a little tight to me. So that's why I made them generally bigger. Okay? Now to you, Tucker.
I was just going to ask, have you seen each of these concepts, like done in practice, and what were the, you know, the pros or cons? Or is there one that worked better in actuality than the others?
As far as the site plan is concerned?
Yeah, just the general concept. I know you may not have an exact comparable, but.
Yeah, yeah, well, I, I don't have an exact comparable, and I, I think I, and I also don't have the context of how, how the hearings have been going and all the issues that have bubbled to the top. But, so for me, the study, the idea of studies were, were a way to frame questions. And I, I do think that my conclusion at the end of the day was that this project would benefit, really hugely benefit for a more integrated feeling across the entire site. That, I couldn't get away from that once I started really studying it. I kept going back to that notion, which, and I think I forgot to say this, but by the time I got through three studies, trying to make them all very different and having different organizing elements that hold the site together, I went back and looked at number one and said, "There's no way I would put all of those condominium units on those last two blocks." It didn't make sense anymore, just from what I'd learned from doing the study. So I, I'm hoping if it does bring up questions, it will. For example, I think an important question is a perimeter roadway, if that's... Well, first of all, I have no sense of flexibility on the side of the developer. I haven't talked to the developer, that's not my job. So, you know, I have no sense of how, how fluid things are. know, I have no sense of how, how fluid things are. But I guess I can tell you that I think, I really think that issue needs to be addressed head-on. How you want to sense the entire depth of this development? Is there a strict break from condo to single-family homes? Are the lots, should the lots be somewhat bigger? I believe they should. I think in the, in the, this was not reviewed by anyone who knows anything about stormwater management. I think it's highly likely that I should. My density is too high, that some of these sites may have to disappear to make way, other than the one that's developed around the rain garden. I think that, that may be enough acreage to handle the stormwater. And that's just my intuitive sense. I do think there's a very good chance in the other more strictly gridded schemes that there may have to be some area set aside for stormwater management that I, it's beyond my expertise.
Thank you.
I have a question on your second sketch. So I noticed in this one that you do not have any encroachment on the, the sewer easement through the site. And so I'm wondering if you could explain to me a little bit, I mean, I sort of like, just personally, I sort of like the flow of this and that it has more of a neighborhood feel. I feel like really with the density they're talking about, it's more like a pocket neighborhood than it is trying to integrate into anything around it. So could you explain sort of what this central section is? And if the crosshatching, connecting that central piece with the pieces to the right and left of that, what you were thinking there?
It was just kind of graphically trying to push that idea of making sure that there's physical integration across the sites, encouraging pedestrian.
So is it like a brick walkway or some kind of something?
Hard raised walkway, traffic coming, crosswalk. You know, again, this was a scheme that, once I had sketched it, thought, really thought about a kind of town that we seemed to work for me. How that community building is programmed, you know, I really don't know much about, but I would imagine that's where kids are picked up by the school bus. You know, if this were rental, that might be where you go to get your mail. And, you know, I'm not clear what exactly functioned it would have, but to me, it makes sense to have it closer to the front of the development.
And would you see these, I don't know how they're described, in one sort of a middle oval and the other is a bit of an amorphous thing? Could those be like the, the rain garden kind of thing you were talking about?
They could be. But, you know, I actually did have a rain garden written and I whited it out. And the least, the least I did was, I was thinking the tots, there might be too many mosquitoes for to, to a lot. So the, it really, again, I, I don't know what the program is for the common amenities on the site, but we're talking about a substantial population living on this site.
Right, and a huge stormwater issue.
Absolutely. Well, and that's what I said. I think that some of these sites may have to go away, you know, to make way for stormwater. Some of these plots, or lots, building lots. And I think, again, I, I really want to reiterate that, you know, those are just tick marks showing parking spaces.
Oh, no, but the idea is that you would, you're at least admitting that there would be a need for on-street parking, which is hard to get people to admit around here. And there is a huge need for developments to be considering on-street parking, not stacked parking. You were speaking of very often lambs with people parking on the side of the road, you know, pulling off the side of the road and populating that with, making that the new parking space. Because, well, as we all know, it's, you know, when people are coming and going at different times, it's hard to be parked like this and be the car in the right spot at the right time.
Yeah, no, it's incumbent.
So then you think, oh, I'm just running into a park over here. But, so I, I appreciate the recognition.
I think that needs to be, yeah, I mean, I think it's incumbent on the developer to make a realistic projection of how much you consider parking is required and, you know, various overflow uses, so, yeah.
Yeah, I was noticing that the, I was sort of reviewing the Tacoma Green situation. And, you know, for a one-bedroom unit, there's like one parking spot. But you know most one-bedroom units are going to have two adults and therefore two parking spots. So already you're counting somebody out, right? You're already somebody. And, and as much as we would like to think people are going to use mopeds and bicycles, it doesn't seem to be the year-round drift. And we don't have small cars. I mean, some people do. I hidden in their, in their garage or something. But, you know, a lot of the people, I don't know about here at the table, but in the trades use, you know, full-size trucks and not, you know, in that kind of folks.
I said that down there, but actually today there are a lot of trucks on the site.
Yes, exactly. You notice when you drive off island, you're like, wow.
Question here. Yeah, Sean in Bro. Just so you know, I live right across the street from this development. And I, you know, I know Jacques already brought up the density, but I had a couple of questions about the density and about what you take into consideration when you talk about the density of a project. And I think this would be more for you just because you are, you're returning here. Is that as for?
No, I have not, I never wanted to be a part of that.
But, so for, for, for me, you know, we have a one-acre zoning, but we still have, you know, we're surrounded by trees and, you know, the deer and the birdhouses. And I know everyone on the street, or I shouldn't say everyone, but that street is, during the last census, they said was the, one of the largest year-round populations on Nantucket Island. And what is really going to affect everyone's quality of life down on that street as far as just the traffic, the noise, just there's already puddles on the street. The traffic, again, is just, it's really going to overwhelm the neighborhood. And I know a lot of people are already talking about moving. The abutters are already talking about putting their houses on the market just because of the stress this is causing their life. And I know that a 40B is going to continue, but there is the, if a local concern outweighs the need for affordable units. And so I just wanted to know if this is ever taken into consideration, the effect that this is going to have on the community surrounding this development?
Well, I think you've been to most of the hearings. And you know the traffic was one of the earliest issues that the ZBA addressed. That's the mechanism for reviewing traffic. The developer submits a traffic, TIAAS, traffic impact analysis study, and then it's peer reviewed. So, again, what this meeting is about today, this work session, is really thinking about what is the best design for this development. I was talking about site plan and buildings. I probably should have said, we're really focusing on site plan and what makes that community work. Traffic, I think, to a great degree.
I don't mean to just say traffic. I'm just saying it's the whole effect of this development. I mean, everyone, if you go down the road.
Well, Cliff, you're not going to ask Cliff to think about traffic because he's an expert designer. He doesn't know anything about traffic. So we didn't ask, we didn't ask Cliff to worry about traffic.
I'm not saying about causes or, you know, just externalities that would affect the neighbors or the surrounding community.
Right. And the, the ZBA, in creating its decision, has to take into consideration all local concerns. But then they have to weigh that against what's known as the regional need for housing. That's why I said it's a gray area and ZBA are always saying, look, are we better off? And the intent, whenever I worked on a 40B, regardless if I'm representing a developer or advising the ZBA, we're trying to get the best compromise plan that's possible because I don't think develop, I know when I represent developers, we don't want to have to go to the HAC process because it takes up a lot of time, it takes up money and there is some risk people have. And towns rarely want to go to the HAC for the simple reason that if you take a look at the actual decisions issued by the HAC, more than a major, a strong majority of the cases are favored, are ruled in favor of the developer. So you try to work out the best sort of plan you can.
So I have a quick question on that that I've been curious about. Because I don't know how many towns are, are like ours. So what I'm wondering in that strong, in that large group that it goes in favor of the developer, how many of those towns are actually like on an island? I'm, I'm honestly curious because I feel like with our emergency issues that can come up here, you know, to add a bunch of people and say, okay, now we all need to get off for a hurricane or something, or power is out for two weeks and now we, you know, our population is at risk. That's why I, I wonder.
No, I, I think local concerns means local concerns. And part of that is being in an island. What works against you is that 2.5% of your housing is listed on the, on the subsidized housing inventory. So that, you know, if you were at 9.9%, you'd probably, if I were handicapping sort of your likelihood of success at the HAC, you'd be in a stronger position. Now, I know there's some, I've spoken with Tucker, I took a tour with Tucker this, this morning. There's lots of proposed action. But you just have to sort of take all of that into your calculus in terms of what's likely outcomes of. But clearly, the, the islands are special places.
So I'm just, so then mostly it's numbers.
Excuse me. Can we please try to stay on task with being a design review committee? I mean, I can understand that there are many, many concerns with this development, but we're supposed to talk about these sketches and we're not going to, you know, just start commenting on the pros and cons of these possible schematics. So.
I, I thank you.
Let me, let me, can I make some comments?
Yes.
Of the three, if we were going a direction, I, I am partial to two. I don't, that, that was the one with, they're basically single lots with different sized buildings on them. You can mix and match. It doesn't set up the contrasting developments of condo. And by the way, I don't have any problem with, but condos is just a form of ownership. Big buildings, little buildings. So let's go there. I, I doubt if, if I'm done looking at this, if some of these corners work, maybe in the back. So it, it would need to be tweaked, but you can get at least two, if not four, on some of the bigger lots. Let's say they were duplexes and not triplexes. You would have two side-by-side parking spaces on each, a backyard for each, a side yard for each. It just seems to me to be, again, much more of a neighborhood, much more how, much more appropriate for Nantucket, what, how, again, I'm not saying that the, it isn't a lot of people in a small space, but this is a lot closer for me. So I personally would like to sort of focus on this unless everybody feels, or anybody feels strongly about any of the others.
I don't feel strongly about any of the others, but I think what I like about three is that it feels a bit more natural. I, I like the varying lot shapes and, and sizes. I think two still feels very regimented. And one of the comments that I know the BHGC had from a site planning perspective was trying to make the neighborhood look a little bit more varied. Because this is so gridded, it feels very repetitive.
Sort of like a gnaw shop where the, where the roads wind a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think the road layout, I actually like the number three. I agree that the two pockets of larger structures are maybe not, maybe not ideal, but I do think that the rain garden in the middle is definitely more attractive. And you end up with some varying lots that will help speak to some varying architecture that will address the road slightly differently, which I think adds to some character.
Well, maybe what you could do is these could become a little roadless into the condo.
From the corner piece.
Right, just like the corner piece is repeated three times and you get back to the single, not, not single-family homes.
But smaller lots, rather than taller buildings on favorite lots.
Which, which quite frankly, from a development standpoint, I'm, I'm thinking that's a win in that you can build the buildings as you go versus building 12, or, or six, or I can't remember what the original plan, five, very large buildings with, you're going to pre-sell them. I mean, maybe that happens, but I, I, I don't know. It just seems to me a little bit more user-friendly for everybody. So.
Thanks. Cormac Collier. Let me see if I can say this in sort of a constructive manner.
It's always helpful.
Obviously, we have a, we have a goal and objective that we all want to walk away at some point after these, these work group sessions with somewhat of a hopefully working consensus. I appreciate all the work that you did and sharing these plans, but I do say but in that you're constricted with a, a lot count that is essentially unfavorable to three-quarters of the people that are in this room. And you've given us three design plans with a certain density of 80 to 90 units, which, in my opinion, they all simply just don't work because it's too, too dense. And you said something fairly significant that you were, had to do that because you simply just didn't know what the flexibility of the developer was. So if there is further flexibility on the developer's standpoint to reduce the number of lots, I think there would be the ability to talk a little bit more, at least on my part, about a design layout that might work. Because simply the density is just too great. The buffer zones are not big enough. The environmental and open space protections on these lots is, is just insignificant. So if I'm sitting here knowing that it's still 80 to 90, I'll still hit, sit here and discuss the, the design layouts as maybe hopefully would present themselves to improve some of the aspects I just talked about. But unless there's a, a further reduction in density on behalf of the developer, I don't see how these work from those simple standpoints. I mean, if there's a reduction in density and a reduction in some of the other aspects, you can clearly increase the both, the buffer open spaces. And we can go through that here and there, but again, that might just be moot if there's no desire to reduce the density.
Something I would, I'd respond to that or, or expand on it, I guess, is that I think you also want to talk about density with respect to the number of bedrooms.
Correct.
You know, not necessarily, not strictly the number of buildings, but I would look at the number of bedrooms. And if I can make a, do you mind if I just divert a little bit from looking at, it's just for a second. It's about buildings. It's not about site. The, the, I do have a couple of comments about the buildings that I did want to make. And I forgot your name. I bet Lisa made them years ago. But I think that about the buildings, there are a lot of different building types that were proposed in the package that I reviewed. And I think the, I'm kind of responding to what you said about regimented and maybe some more casual arrangement of buildings, much like a lot of what you could see. And I agree with you that that's kind of a better fit in a lot of ways, in, in all ways, I think, compared with, if you look at all the different developments. But I would say, and to your point about density, it's, I think the, a couple of the building ideas that I'm troubled with, one is, is putting bedrooms in basements. And to me, that, it just is a very strange thing to do with new construction. And I do thousands of units. And I just, I, that one I just don't get. It just doesn't compute with me. It's a way of increasing density in a not a very pleasant way. You know, we're not on a train line or something and trying to shove people into every available square inch. So I'll make that comment. That would go to your density, I think, as far as intensity and use of the site and its impact outside of the site. I would also encourage a developer to look at, at enhanced accessibility for the development. And, you know, we're talking about a lot of units. They're expensive homes. There are going to be a lot of older people inevitably living in this development. And I think looking at ways, it, I think the, as best I can tell, and I did a cursory read through my dog-eared access guidelines. through my dog-eared access guidelines, and I think it is possible to meet the code, meet the current code for accessibility with the project as designed, maybe with a few tweaks here and there, not knowing anything about the community building, for example. But I would encourage a developer to look at going beyond what's strictly required because you are having an aging population. People may at some point really not appreciate having steps going up to their house, not having bedrooms on habitable levels. Homeownership is not exempt from all accessibility requirements, it's kind of far from it. The site is fully, has to comply with full site accessibility and all the amenities on the site, right number parking spaces, et cetera. There are a lot of exemptions for full accessible units, group two units are not required in homeownership, but there are group one requirements, which is a lower level of accessibility. I think in most ways, they're kind of exempt, if depending upon how you spin that, but I don't think it's a good idea. I think it's not a picture for looking for the long term for the development. So I would encourage a developer to look at creating a certain percentage, a realistic percentage of accessible units to allow people to age in place in the development.
Other design comments?
The, I would agree with Lisa that the third plan, I really liked the sort of organic way the road works. The rain garden is, is, or rain garden. That would probably work the best of all the three plans as far as stormwater management issues, which are going to be significant for the site. I think plan, plan one has no chance ever of meeting any kind of stormwater standards. Plan two, maybe? I think there's a lot of problems with that, so it could maybe be worked out. You have to leave some of the lots out. Just comments.
Actually, because of the public or maybe you, Jacque, you actually live right to the, I'm going to call it south, but in here somewhere.
Ten feet away.
So what do you, how do you feel about the parking, rather perimeter versus on the interior?
Well, actually, I'm totally against, I didn't move a thousand feet off the road to have a parking lot located twenty feet away from my house.
Okay, so you like the interior.
And I've spoken to old neighbors on the south side, actually on the west side, and no one is enthused about headlights hitting their house or just the noise involved with the peripheral. And also putting railways, peripheral railways can be an issue with stormwater just because they're so close to the edge and so how do you tilt them back towards the inside and try to collect all the water? If you're having one of those storms that dumps a couple inches, it's more than likely that the water will just run to the neighborhood.
To the neighborhood, yeah. Okay. Because that was one of the issues that Chris brought up is like that's a defining question is perimeter railways versus the interior.
Yeah, name it. I mean, it's. Go ahead, Cormac.
Just, also, just the parking, parking really, I mean, I'm really for having parking on the lots itself because the problem with doing these large parking lots is inappropriate surface. And the more inappropriate surface we have, the bigger problem you're going to have dealing with stormwater and remediation and noise, lights, it just, big parking lots add a lot of other things that are negative to the neighborhood.
Right, like the South Shore parking lot.
Yeah, South Shore.
Just a comment on this one, yeah, I would agree that it is more organic and it flows a little bit better. But again, regarding the density question, and again, it might be moved at the end of the day, but if you see lots on the south, then they're five eighteen, five nineteen, five twenty, five twenty-one. If those are reduced and two are combined into one, you get more of a horizontal configuration of the lot, where the actual house can be more horizontal than vertical. And then your lawn is more constricted with that horizontal here or the backyard space, and then you can bring up that open space buffer from that lot line even more. It's obviously a lot layout and a lot number question, but there's the ability, if you, again, make those more horizontal than vertical, you can improve your buffer and open space protection.
You saw nobody get scared of five hundred and eighteen units, that's Cliff's idea of an ass.
Single family, right?
Single, yeah.
Sorry.
Took me a while on that one, but. That's crazy. Other, other design?
I appreciate plan number three as well. I like the one-way street, I like the six-foot multi-use sidewalk with the stuffs and the green, the significant green space. I'd like to see the buildings, the condominium buildings broken up more like the Park Circle buildings, which are two units per building or even four. And it looks like that would work so that they could be all duplexes and that that could probably even work in the buildings adjacent to the common building. I appreciate that the single families are the first thing that you will say from the main road and then the condo buildings are adjacent to the pub house and adjacent to the sage and path side, which is denser than the two-way for properties on the other side. I was a little bit concerned about putting too much paving over these.
Yeah, you could, I think you could shift that pretty easily to the west.
Yeah.
Right, and move the top lot over to maybe that.
Put the playground on the common buildings side.
Ed, do you want to show Cliff the Park Circle plan I printed for your letter?
I'll do it, sure.
Okay. I have to say, I think in general, the two and three, what I really like about it, I think one of the things that we've been talking about at the ZBAN is just, to your point, was it's just trying to integrate the different types of buildings around the neighborhoods so that it was less of a condos, single-family house. And I think that these, both of those plans, we have achieved it very well. And the only advantage of two was that, to Ed's point, that every, every building is on its own little lot, so you get the sense of more building separation and less larger structures and bigger parking lots, which I think is a good point.
I think you could do that with the little, with the little hammerheads, whatever you want to call it. I will, the six-foot, I like three as well for some reasons, but the six-foot park, I mean, sidewalk is across the street from all of the houses. So you have to cross the street to get to the sidewalk. I mean, it seems a little odd.
But it's taking, it's creating a.
Yeah.
But it's creating a multifunctional walking path that's actually next to the green space.
And it's not interrupted by cars.
Yeah, exactly.
It's a little safer because you don't have anybody.
I have to get through the parked cars to.
Well, you need lots to cross.
It'll be like a helping road and all the driveways crossing and.
Yeah, yeah. All right, and again, that's a detail.
Tucker?
Yeah, I mean, I like the organic shape of three. And it seems like there's some positive feedback to the notion of two, which I think really captured the principle that Cliff outlined at the beginning about the integration of the different types, like throughout. Three, I like the organic shape of three, but it, the condo or duplex part does still feel a bit segregated, but just in a different way. And so my question was, and this, you may not have any issue with this right now, Cliff, but I just wondered if you had looked at kind of a, you know, what would be the impact of imposing the principle of two on the integration to the schematic of three in terms of the reduction of units, trying to get to, like really trying to get to a number around the notion that Cormac brought up. Like if I'm, if I was the developer and I was sitting here saying, hey, like I showed up, I'm interested in this feedback, but just telling me it's too many doesn't tell me anything. Like what is a number that might feel, you know, what is, what is a number that is going to feel good to you? So then at least I know what to react to. So I, anyway, I'll leave it at that.
I could give you a number.
A realist.
I think rather than focusing on the number, which is, everybody's going to have a different number in this room. We'd all come, if we put a little number in the hat, they would all be different, our tongue would be close. But I think it's a function of the design elements and how that impacts the number. Because, again, if you have sidewalk, that takes up space. If you have rain garden, it takes up space. I mean, we need, we need to make sure that the design works and then the, the number will flow.
And that was exactly my question, is that if we, I'm hearing some receptivity to the organic shape of three and the principle of the integration of the units of design version two, and I'm just wondering what might that translate into the units?
I think, well, I think what it could translate into as far as modifying this, we just imagine that piece transposed there in there. So you could still break it up into lots, so I think it would actually create some variety as well.
Might have less density though, right?
I think it probably would.
And there are options.
I think it would, yeah.
They're talking about, yeah, like shifting that road over and then creating a driveway up here, because you can't get to these lots thirty.
Even have a little Porsche off of that.
Yeah.
There are options, so.
So, yeah, I mean, I tend to agree that it's hard to put, I don't think it's fair to put a number on it, but I think if we can give a direction in design, the numbers will sort of fall into place. They might not be as low as you're going to want, correct? But I think they're going to.
Or they might get much lower than they want.
Right.
So, you know, that's why we're here. And it's not to talk about going to a specific company.
The purpose of this is, where again, to address the major issues, I think we've eliminated the possibility of a corner road.
Yeah. I just, I mean, my points were, though, that we had three options with eighty to ninety. And if it's, that's the end of the day, eighty to ninety, those are my points, the eighty to ninety.
Just to play the devil's advocate or something here, you know, Cliff might not have considered everything like drainage and whatnot. Well, when you start factoring the drainage, maybe the ninety goes to eighty-five. We don't know that yet, so let's at least get, in my opinion, we want to get a concept on the design, see where it goes. And again, it may be a hundred percent unacceptable or something.
Agreed, and I think that's an appropriate way to start with the design. I just didn't want to forget about the density because we were talking three designs at the same density is what I was sort of saying.
Is there any concern about a one-way road through this in terms of evacuation, safety?
Probably.
I mean, again, that was my only hesitation with liking three is that, you know, there is only one way. I suppose in an emergency, you know, I guess you have to keep it one way because people are hitting to each other. You know, that was my only question about that from a safety perspective. Would you have any concern with that, given the size of this development and the fact that it comes off a one-way street or a dead-end street?
I would say my first stop would be the fire department, check with them. They're the ones who usually have the best sense of, you know, safety. I mean, they look at how many ingress points you have from the development, and you do have two, that's good.
But they're both going, one's going to be an ingress and one's going to be an egress, correct?
The road could also get wider.
It could.
Yeah, oh, the road could definitely get wider. Yeah, it only needs to be.
Maybe these are both two ways and this circle is one way or something.
Thirty feet of paving would give you parking.
Well, and actually, the plan that submitted, we did meet with the fire department and they reviewed it, and they didn't bring up any issues with the one-way. We discussed the road widths and they didn't have any issues with that.
That's a one-way going around the perimeter then?
That's a one-way as well.
All the way through.
Yeah.
I think it's a, it's a really important thing to look at. I can tell you the only reason I did it, or there are two reasons. One is I thought you needed enough difference between this space and that space, right? So really, you need to favor, to make this plan work, you need to favor one side. So I pushed it, so I narrowed up the roadways a bit. Would it kill this? No, I mean, if it, if the road were wider. So and I pushed this down to what, to, I thought if it was too big, well, I don't know, it just, it was a balance issue.
You could make it two coming in from South Shore Road, maybe two-way, and then do a circle that's one-way around the rain garden potentially.
And the other reason was more just thinking about slowing and, been more predictable and just seeming more rural, I guess, making it one way.
It does seem safer.
Yeah, because you always know where it's coming from.
Yeah.
So that was the only reason.
Do you have a question, question here?
I do have just a little design thing on the addition of cul-de-sacs or something like that, I think I was overhearing. Doesn't that increase the paved way so that if in the corners at S sixteen and S seventeen, if you do a similar piece like you have around S thirteen and S ten, I'm assuming that's like a roadway that would be like a cul-de-sac in my, right there?
But I think we were talking about that in relation to changing the condo, big lots to more of the cul-de-sac.
Well, right, but then you sort of, I don't know, in my head, it seems like it, it spreads your road surface out.
But you get rid of the big parking lot.
So there is a give and take.
Everyone's talking on their own lands, you don't have to worry about the lighting of the parking as much.
Right, I mean, I, I'm sort of with you, maybe with the organic thing, I sort of liked two, like if thirty-one and thirty-two were like a three on two. You know how on two, there's more integration of the buildings and single-family homes? And so on your entry to sketch two, you could have, like where it says two, you could put like a three, one of those three buildings?
Well, three, if you get three, if you get away from the kind of development, you can, they can interchange, it only needs to interchange.
Well, that's what we're trying to say. Semi-organic until you get to this stretch, which.
Right, that's what we're saying, it's about the building.
It sort of seems like some of that area in the middle there anyway, we have to, yeah, somehow, I mean, even if you did a cross something, but somewhere in there, you're going to have to have some catch bases for your stormwater runoff, right?
Yeah.
I mean, so that each of these lots can't just be a building, some of them are going to have to become small.
Well, and that's what I was saying, I wasn't looking, yeah, I wasn't looking.
Yeah, but anyway, it was just my thought to try and keep parking off from the sewer easement and to break up that apartment blocking thing, I mean, that's on three by taking and combining some of the, on three, like combining some of your entry lots into having the townhouse buildings or the eighteen by thirty-five, however, units, you know, where you, and you start to sort of spread that around. It's just my thought to try and continue with the integrated, because this to me still has the sense of single-family homes and not.
Well, there's the rural condos at the front in option three, but I know what you mean. I mean, that's why I think trying to take option three and laying it out with some of the same, the things that you're putting out with option two, that make it more, feel more integrated is the goal.
More of a neighborhood so that, you know, kids and people are.
The smaller parking lots, I think run themselves with a shell solution that you did at Beach Pump. I'm not sure you'd do shelves for larger parking lots.
You'd have to have light posts and things like that that would make it more intrusive.
So again, the smaller the module, the more flexibility you have.
Right. More neighborhood, it would look more like a neighborhood.
Other design comments?
Do you think it's safe, Ed, or is there consensus in the room that an integrated design would be better than pods of condos versus separate?
Well, there's been noticeable silence, and I think it's delivered from the developers. I think they're listening. I'm not sure if you're going to want to comment at the end or whether you're going I'm not sure if you're gonna wanna comment at the end or whether you're gonna wanna absorb this. Let, let's ask, is there anybody who, well, does everybody think integration of condos with single families makes sense? I, I think that's a second. No permanent roads, integration.
I also really appreciated your comment about bringing the, um, wrecked buildings more to the entry part of the lot, of the development, because it does become sort of the face of the development and integrate it maybe a little bit more to the neighborhood. I, it hasn't really been defined what the program of that building is going to be yet in terms of, cause we never got into mail delivery and packages and things like that, where obviously, I think the houses will all get mailed to the house, maybe?
Well, but they're, they're a little single family, not single, but they're little single lots with the duplex on.
You get your mail there, I guess?
And your package, you know?
No, I think you'd have to ask.
You'd have to talk to the office or something.
They won't do that.
They do want it centralized. Yeah, some might be the.
Well, I'm thinking.
You can't get it to do it.
Okay.
But that's why, I do think it's nice to have that more towards the entrance, that if you're coming into the development, you pull into the community building, you go get your mail, and you go on your way to your place.
I think Park Circle has something like that, right? Where they have an ancillary building that have community space, meeting space, letterboxes and things like that, that seems very nice.
I thought the other really good idea, which seems obvious to me now, is to take advantage of that easement for more public space. Before, the prior plans had houses on both sides, and it didn't feel comfortable. I feel like I was walking through someone's backyard. Is, is that a consensus, if that's achievable? Try to build the, a-again, there are issues in terms of what can be done on that, but if it's simply open space, I don't think that's gonna be.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, in the old plan, it was, uh, an easement, but it wasn't a publicly accessed easement, it was only for the sewer. So even though it went through the backs of people's lawns, people weren't gonna be walking down there.
I was described as, as an open space.
It would be open spacing, it's actually a separate lot, it's, it wasn't set up to be an easement on all those lots that way.
Oh, I see.
But you know, the association, so the association could do what they wanted to do under the open.
But it, you just don't feel comfortable using that space. I feel like I was trespassing.
Yeah.
Other consensus, uh, points in terms of your discussion of these designs?
Yeah, I'd like to comment, uh, the consensus on the, um, integration. I find that, uh, that on the third plan, well, a couple things. We haven't really talked about condos and their appropriateness in this neighborhood.
Doc, specifically to that question, are you talking home, the type of ownership?
Actually, no, talking about, actually, the building.
The size of the building.
The size of the building and the density that that entails. Uh, but specifically about this plan, um, I sort of like that they have the integrated parking lot in the center. And I get that maybe one, one to the left or take, uh, S nine, seven and eight, and pop it in between and move the one to the right. But it's, it's a pretty good solution if you are keeping the parking in the center like that. If you can, A, do shell, because that would make a big difference on stormwater and how you're handling it.
So on, on that issue with the shell and the pavement, in the Stormwater Management Act, we have to be able to collect any potential pollutants that are on the surface. And typically, that's done with pavement and the catch basins, that's through rain garden and treated. So it's, it's really, you know, when you have a gravel, a shell-type surface, now you, you're susceptible to pollutants going directly into the ground without being treated, so.
Yeah, sort of correct, in the same, I mean, I, I do agree that they go to the ground, but they have a huge chance of getting bound up in the substrata as opposed to being, um, if, once they hit a, a dry well, there's our water supply. And, and I understand that.
Let's not get into the minutia.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, so anyways, I, I think actually shells are a great idea. I don't mind where these are, I think maybe they need to be separated on the north side a little bit, and I see how that could be done. But I'm not sure, maybe we should talk about the larger, having larger buildings, because that pretty much, my understanding is, everybody in Antucket has, as far as the boards have come out against, uh, having condo density going on in larger buildings.
I, I mean, frankly, if I'm wrong, it looks like what you're trying to look at is modules of, more like a duplex.
Yeah.
Like you're trying on off a supercar road.
Like, like a quadplex.
Well, these, we're asking, I think we would ask them to maybe to think about breaking these into smaller modules.
Ah, okay.
Uh, more two, maybe, maybe three, I don't know, but not, not four wide.
If a lot were extra big, it would be three maybe.
Right.
But if it were a normal-sized lot.
Certainly a different architectural type than the first submission that we've seen, which were large, massive, a hundred and something foot long buildings. I mean, these would be, well, I mean, they're still big, if there's four, they're seventy-two, they're seventy-two feet long.
That's, I may, I'm pretty sure that'll still be the largest building on South Shore Road, except for the sewer department.
Well, again, I'm not sure we're, we're condoning four of them next to each other. I'm just saying, he's working on modules.
And they've also been asking for thirty-seven feet tall, which potentially would make your attic carpet view. I'm not sure if anyone's spent any time on a roof out here, and that's relative to flat. We're all gonna be able to see these buildings if they're built that tall.
I think we made clear that we didn't think that thirty-seven feet was.
The idea is thirty, thirty feet is, I think, discussed as, that's, that's a math.
Yeah. There was some talk about going higher and a lot more steps up, so that you could do these garden level units, but I don't think that that was terribly well received when we looked at them. I mean, I'm speaking just for myself, maybe.
No, I think you were speaking.
And I actually think you bring up a good point too, Cliff, about the aging population and, you know, making them more, m- making sure a lot of these units are designed to be more accessible, so the whole split level entry and downs does seem potentially problematic from that perspective as well.
Tucker, when we did the twos, was it Park Circle?
Yeah.
Where we looked at different types of duplex, you can think of a duplex as a side-by-side building. They had some very well-zoned duplexes, one in front, one in back, clearly defined side entrance that created some privacy. I mean, that, I think, is one of the objectives when you, when you take the next iteration.
And variation in the planes.
Right. So I have a question on that, on Park, do you know what the, the density there is in terms of, um, number of buildings for the square footage of the area or number of bedrooms for the buildings? Just, does anyone happen to know that?
I don't know if we have that. We have had some of the other developments, but not, haven't had that one.
Just that it seems like a.
A good model?
Well, it seems similarly tight. I could be wrong, but I did work in it.
Do we know how that fits, uh, like from an area perspective on one of these little pods? Does anybody?
Park Circle?
Yeah, does somebody have a site plan?
I'm not sure if I have that. Yeah, I asked for a printout, I wonder if David.
And I, I would point out about the, using this kind of module, I think, you know, whether it's two, three, four, whatever it is, that even, one, um, one advantage of, of this approach, I think I mentioned earlier, is how easy it is to really privatize space behind it. It's very clear division of where ownership is in the yard. But it also, the, let's take a three-module building, it might be fifty-four feet long. It's very easy for that building to not look like an urban townhouse as well. You can enter on the ends for two of them and still have an entry that would look, so it would look much like a, you know, fifty-four-foot-wide, single-family home.
Which isn't, in that scale-wise, it's not out of the question in terms of that development, I wouldn't think fifty feet in terms of that neighborhood.
And, and the other point I was gonna make is that the, I think, for people who do design for aging in place, townhouse units are still a, a pretty popular kind of idea, because it's very easy to make hybrid units that bridge across horizontally. So you have a hybrid flat up on the second level and a flat. So it'd be, you know, it doesn't need to be a radically different-looking building, other than you'd have to grade, the grading might be different, so you don't have to go up steps to get into the building.
And it, I think, also allows you the flexibility to do, uh, create a varied unit mix with other units.
Yeah.
Other design comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, um, I certainly wouldn't endorse it, but, uh, the most tolerable one would be three. I think just because it doesn't look like a Walmart parking lot or something with all the straight lines, there's the opening turns. You have a rain garden, so there is some sort of water collection.
Okay.
Possibly with some reworking of those little condo pods.
Absolutely.
The, we, the condo pod remains the problem. It, design-wise, not, not, I think it could be solved, so.
I do think that, and Tom put up a good point, I am in agreement that the lots that are closest to Sasha Road should be single-family though. Cause I think that that's more appropriate for the neighborhood and have the townhouses back, like on option three. But option two had the, uh, townhouses against Sasha Road.
I mean, if, if those townhouses are, are duplexes, you probably from the street can hardly, I mean, you can design it so you can't tell.
Probably.
I mean, it looks like a single-family home, but it has two different, not two entrances right on the front.
Right.
So I think, uh, I think that that certainly would be a nice way to approach it. You can get four spaces probably off the road on each slot, um, on, on the duplex lots. So I, I, I think it has a lot of advantages.
I have a question, kind of for the group, and this might sound pretty much shareable. Obviously, all three sets of plans we looked at, they just, you know, Cliff, you just worked with their number, and you did a great job of getting all of this to fit in a very small package, and it's quite dense. Are we ever gonna be able to look at any plans, possibly with some public input? Maybe like reducing the density, like Cormex said, increasing the buffer size? This might be a question for Jamie actually too. Would you be okay with Cliff drawing something that's less dense and more, larger buffers? Or is that completely out of the question here?
I'm not sure. Well, I do let Jamie answer, but I, I would say Cliff's a, a design peer reviewer. At some point, um, his job is done, is to generate ideas, get feedback, which I think has been very sort of instructive. And then the ball's back into the developer's court.
Yeah, to present something back.
To present something. And I, I'll defer to Ed now. I mean, I've done my job in terms of, of this work session hopefully, but we should, we don't necessarily have to conclude now, but we wanna discuss next steps.
Could I just say one, I think you're totally right, and I, I think the charge will come from the CBA to the developer. With the, that's more.
I mean, the, 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 the options are endless in terms, so I don't, uh, it's, again, as Ed said, it's much more of a peer review situation. So I think I'm hearing from, even from the peer review, that, uh, it didn't quite work as it is, and, and here's some other options, and through our discussion to, to this point, maybe some more. We get to a spot where we're presented with a new idea, or, or if we think we need more time, we come back in a couple of weeks.
Right. And then we ask, I mean, then Cliff gets engaged again.
Right. I do think that, I mean, they're probably, I'm, the assumption is, they're gonna take the concepts that we've thrown out there and come up with their own way of doing this plan.
Absolutely.
As opposed to just using Plan C. This is just kind of putting them in the direction of kind of the feeling and the, um, the character that, you know, was positive, and then the, you know, the interior parking and things that will, and the size of the buildings, and hopefully they'll translate into something that they're happy with, that, um, also, that we'll be happy with, everybody will, will appreciate.
Just a small point of clarity, um, if I'm not mistaken, at least on the original concept, the front buffer is sixty to seventy feet, is that correct? On, along, uh, South Shore Road, that's sixty to seventy-foot buffer, I think? Yeah, okay, just cause I heard, you know, well, as you're driving along there, I just sounded like roadside housing.
I mean, I drove by there today, and even at this time of year, pretty strong buffer.
It's aged in place.
That, that's what I'm trying to do.
Well, I think that's a big concern too, is keeping enough of the buffer and not having any of the buff in place.
And, and if it does get them, you know, supplementing that buffer.
There's sightlines that they're gonna have to cut back to on that buffer, too.
Yeah.
There are what, I didn't hear.
Sightlines. Well, sightlines, they're gonna have to cut back, so that's just gotta be taken consideration, the overall buffer plan, whatever. So it's not truly gonna be that area, they are gonna have to cut off, cut off the roads, two roads coming in.
I mean, is it fair to ask, I mean, at what point do we ask for the developer's input or not?
What we can ask, can they decide?
What do you say, any, any, uh?
Well, I mean, I, I very much appreciate the tone and the desire to, um, find some things that you like, as opposed to just have our stuff out there and hear, um, what you don't like. So, does this give us some ideas? I think it does, in terms of things that maybe we can work with. I have some appreciation for the, for the, um, idea that at least at first blush, we, 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 we have a pro forma that we need to make this thing work. It's gotta work as a business, and so I know there's some sense that you can radically change these numbers and it's not a problem. And that's, is a problem for us, and so we've been trying to say that all along. The idea that, uh, Cliff has, you know, generated something that is, you know, not wildly different from, um, our hundred-unit plan, gives us some comfort in terms of maybe we can get to something that we can all live with. But, you know, we need to kind of, I didn't know what this was gonna be like. We have, you know, we wondered whether there was gonna be some pre-engagement with Cliff in advance of this session, and he has wanted to take the information that has been submitted through the hearing process, absorb it, and deal with it independently. And I respect that, that's what he's done. We have, you know, I saw this at the same time everybody else, an hour ago. So, uh, you know, I, I, I think it's got some interesting ideas there that we'll try and work with.
Okay, so having said that, um, cause it doesn't have to be any one of these three either.
I know.
Which I think is what you said, so how, how do we think we move forward? The developer does some sketching and presents something back at another work group?
I think the work session format works well. I defer to you and Lisa.
Cause if it just comes back in a meeting, you need to. But the next meeting that we're gonna potentially have is.
So for this?
The next potential work group session was the twenty-fourth, second.
Correct.
The next regular meet site, CBA meeting was the fourteenth.
That we're gonna continue though.
With the express purpose of continuing to another date, couldn't get one.
We didn't have a date.
Well, March eleventh has proven to be the most viable, and I've reserved the auditorium. And I'm looking for some more info to be on that, too, also reserve for when I don't wanna lose.
Right.
So we're gonna have another work group session, is there flexibility? Because that's basically the first, well, I mean, technically, the twenty-third is the first day of school vacation, but I'll be gone on the twenty-second.
Ah, good point. Good point. I'm beyond that. The, the problem, Dom, we had was, it was just a huge struggling to get a room. It's amazing.
To get a room, we have everybody being this calm.
Right. I, I, the twenty second's not etched in stone. I, I think that there was some concern that there has to be turnaround time too. I mean, Chris, for you to come up with, or somebody to come up with something else, takes time. Everybody has other things going on, so.
One of the things that I wondered, Mr. Chairman, is, so we are, we have our team. We have our head. Cliff has now spent some good time thinking creatively about the site. Is it appropriate to be able to, I would like to be able to have some interchange as we do some of our work. It's our plan, it's not his plan, but, you know, can we spend some time? And I think we're paying the bill anyways, but can we spend some time bouncing ideas off with Cliff?
I don't see a problem with it.
But I guess with the caveat that even if, if he, I mean, it still has to come through the board.
Absolutely. He's not, he's not, he's not deciding.
He's not making the vote.
I should have repeated, no decisions get made at a ZBA work, at a work session. We, Ed and Lisa are now charged with reporting back to the full board.
Right.
Cliff would certainly not make any decisions. And that, that's.
This has been the most.
Boards I, boards I work with always encourage sort of discussions between their peer reviewers and the applicant. They ask that the peer reviewer submit a summary of the, that's all. And I think, again, timing does matter on this. We know that from our discussions. So I think anything that helps us get to a agreed upon plan quicker makes sense.
Sorry, yeah, I think it's fine. Are you okay with it?
Sure.
But I do, I, I like the idea, when you say reporting on the, on the meeting, I mean, every phone call?
No, it's up to you.
Yeah, I, I don't need that.
It's a, it's a summary, that's all.
Yeah, that's fine. I think it makes sense, because again, I feel that we were a little stuck, and hopefully we can get unstuck.
And I think it's easier for Cliff to do that, having had feedback from a number of different interest groups here.
No doubt. So, if we do this, can we do it in Cambridge?
I think that all of us from Cambridge. Just as, yeah, I mean, yeah. I mean, it's, some of it's phone calls, you know, it may be useful to sit down if you can, but.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great idea. I mean, there may be things it done, says, no, you can't put a road over the easement anymore than we already did. It's gonna be a problem, or using Shell is, creates other problems that are different problems, or whatever the things are. I would like to see, if possible, if, if we're moving forward, some iterations that show parking off of the, well, on each slot. It begins, if we think we're getting into a design direction that you think might work, maybe begin to show the buildings and whatnot.
Yeah. Well, let's, I think we wanna, we wanna get closer than we are right now, because something that everybody thinks is gonna be acceptable, yeah. We don't wanna spend time and money working out all of the refined details on something that's, you know, you like this part of it, and what we did was we went in the wrong direction.
Yeah.
Schedule, so the question is, what's the schedule?
Would we come back to another work session, or go directly to the next ZBA hearing?
So the next ZBA meeting is on the fourteenth, to extend to the eleventh, it sounds like? And then the next work group is currently scheduled for the twenty second, is that right?
I, I didn't, nothing scheduled as much as that was the date it seemed to work.
That's a week from tomorrow? No, twenty second, sorry.
No, it's two weeks.
Two weeks away.
It's two weeks. The Sunday meeting, the next Sunday meeting is the twelfth?
Fourteenth, although we're not gonna have a core, we're not gonna have a.
Just a schedule, so that you don't have to readvertise.
We couldn't come up with a date to move it to, so we've.
So the fourteenth is not a substantive meeting, it's a scheduling meeting.
Scheduling meeting.
Which is actually pointing towards March eleventh.
Yes.
As an actual next meeting. And I think that we should, we should try and have another one of these workshop meetings.
I think.
I would be ready for the eleventh, well, be there on the eleventh, so that we can see where we are and make some further adjustments if we're getting older about the schedule.
I, I agree. And at one point, it was going to be the twenty second.
Right. And that's when the room is scheduled, and one has to keep in mind that rooms are very difficult to come by as far as scheduling public.
It's also the human being.
So I think that Eleanor made a terrific effort to get one on the twenty second, so.
Does that work for you guys?
Yeah.
So let's try and do that, do it.
Can't put email around the sketches that.
Yeah.
Who was not here, email comments.
Oh, sure.
Were you able to come on the table? And then people couldn't hear about.
I don't know what, who, where that date came from.
Was that the last meeting you recommended?
Oh, we'll, we'll get there, if I'm not here right now.
But we would try to.
You can always call in.
Agree that.
The twenty second is a date or not a date?
Well, I think it sounds like it's a date that we have the room, and getting this room again, and all the.
But it may not work for you.
But Ed might not be.
I'm gonna try hard, so.
You could say me.
Do you have access to the chat?
Yeah.
I don't know, we have a slut woman, a slut forward member here, she can tell us.
Yeah, I'll do my best, so let's not get stuck on me.
So let's assume a work session, February twenty second.
Is it same time, same place?
Same time, is it same time, Eleanor?
Yes.
One thirty.
One thirty.
I have the room from eleven. Eleven thirty to four thirty, so if you wanna meet earlier on, that's just, that's a question, probably a plane day, so.
One thirty works.
One thirty gives us a couple of shots to get over here.
Yeah. Yeah, you might wanna go drive to Hyatt, so it's safer than safe air.
Yeah.
Did you get stuff?
Not safer, like.
Schedule wise.
Schedule wise, yeah, yeah.
Josh had the same issue.
Correct. So one thirty probably is, is good. And then the idea would be potentially to circulate the sketches a few days beforehand, just so people get, get a sense.
People that can't be here, you can't make a conversation, so.
Are you talking about the sketches that will be generated from collaboration?
Yeah.
Okay.
Steve?
Yeah, if I may, Stephen Welsh, I'd just like to suggest that with respect to circulating schedules, if we actually set a date. And that it would be, I mean, not to be a mandatory requirement, and I understand having sketches, well, could be considered a double edged sword, depending on where you're sitting and what different goals are and the, and the potential conflicts. But I just think it's, it's helpful, it's more for people to have an opportunity to review them, think about them, and give more meaningful comments. And I think that that can be helpful to your process as developers. So I would suggest that if it was, you know, even if it's a day and a half before, if the meeting's on a Wednesday, it's five PM on a Monday. I'm not looking to create an architecture deadline, but.
No, I think it's a great idea.
Twenty second is a Friday.
Would you wanna get these in front of the HCC board ahead of time?
Well, I, I actually would prefer, but I think, my suggestion, I think, is gonna be that I, I believe the HCC will get another bite in the apple a little bit when we get further down the review process line with actual structures, getting some feedback put in on the buildings. Because I believe, maybe incorrectly, that the result of this will, will be that the dwellings and the other structures on the lots are gonna be somewhat, if not markedly different, based on what the output of, of the lot sizes, which will be generated by the redevelopment design of the site. So that, not to create delays in the process, but there would be more reviews involved. And I would suggest that that's maybe where HCC would get more involved. It's completely up to you all, but.
Yeah, we, yeah.
Definitely go back.
You can see it.
And then with the HCC, the only other thing is, we, you know, we would need to know in advance in order to schedule a meeting. And we obviously have to do open meeting, log, notice is, and so on and so forth. So there's a little bit of a logistical matter there too.
Yeah, I think we're good, and we're putting some animal before the cart, right? Come on.
Before the end.
We say that we'll.
Your car is before the end.
Could you say that plans need to be sent to Eleanor by?
I think Wednesday for Friday. Does that seem right? Do you?
Twenty. Twenty.
Yeah. Oh, I think that's a great idea.
Midday would be the best.
Midday.
Two people, two full days.
Well, yeah, and you can't email to Eleanor, even though she sometimes works odd hours, which is great, I might add. Do it during, during the workday, hopefully early. Uh, okay, so, anything else? Anything to suggest? No.
No, just saying, that everybody.
Okay, thank you, and see everybody the twenty second.
Thank you. Do we have to make the motion to adjourn?
Do we have to, is this, do we vote? No, we're not, we're not.
Are you just adjourned, babe?
We're leaving. So you have to bring back, bring rest.
If I've got a scene, I'd like to ask this to the, I don't buy Skywalks.
Good deal, sales?
I gotta get the photo. And there's a tree there in season, and they are. Yeah, then I'm applying.
Unless you have a way now.
You need the. Yeah, hey, Cliff, do you want, or no, Chris, you run the chat traffic?
It's Chris's, uh, question.
Which one's the flash? Thanks.
Oh, and I've seen you.
I do, the last time was another one of these work sessions. Any day now. All right, so you're right here. How many did I do? I did twenty, thirty, forty-two or some number, right?
Yeah, do you know where? I've posted it in the back, actually.
I ain't know how many it was, so.
Yeah. Pointy. The one.
Well, you don't believe it's gonna just walk, it's just bad.
Good point.
I think it really helps the behind doing this. Yeah. Yeah.
Let it, let it die, it's been a long time since it's been. Does he have a place with the? No, you're totally with. Yeah. But it is, it's, it's always sort of, I've been for me.
So you've got, you've got, I can take you, Ed, sure, I can take you over these though.
Oh, where's my cell phone?
Yeah, can you take me to the scout? Sale, did Daryl? It's my son, he said he's gonna kill me if I don't bring him to scout.
Yeah, they all say that.
I'm just gonna catch him at two.
That's fine, I'll be right there. You don't need to come out here for a scout, you don't need to love us for a scout. I don't, I can't work, I don't, I'll never see.
Or this March card.
It's ridiculous, it's almost like a hundred and fifty minutes.
And that has to, that should be on a two-year schedule.
There was a little, I haven't seen, it was actually probably owned by the employees.
That worked out really well, they started after designing stuff like that.
That's why I'm sort of into. Personally, more wild cards. You know, again, exactly the same. So you, are you in the seniors too? No, no, I'm in the junior. And you live in Cambridge? I think that I could have, if I just. Yeah, oh, I know where I work.
Yeah, I guess. You're young.
Sit down, yeah?
Yeah, we should.
I'm good, it's not gonna be today, but it's gonna be soon, because I know I've been saying that, but we are getting through it. Yeah.
So, so, I am free. Well, if you know Charlie, right? Right, are the things right there?
I'm a doctor.
Yep, yep.
Right.
Yeah, so definitely him, it was definitely, do you know what kids he was?
Charlie was five years old, pretty much here in class, so.
Yeah.
And then, brother Bill was older, we had Tom. And we had someone else.
Did you see Pies' kids, maybe?
No, they were, they were all the ECAT kids. Went to all the ECAT, like in the lower school, too. Oh, really? Yeah. They were Hellraisers. These, those guys were like, they swore, we were like really goody-goody Jewish kids. And you go to the kids, they were like next house up on the bottom nights. You go in there, they're like swearing like sailors, and we're just like, oh my God, I'm gonna get in trouble with my parents just for listening to this.
Well, did you know the Crummies?
Yeah.
Eddie and, Eddie and what's his sister?
Crummies. Yeah.
Yeah.
This is, actually, this is. Remember, it's crazy, like, I think they were next door to us, a lot of the way in the corner of the.
They, they sort of were down the bottom, and you just went up the hill, as he was on the right, right hand side, they were down the bottom.
Yeah, they were like.
And you're good on?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
I'm on.
Yeah, so the.
Just briefly on the.
Yeah, so the, just briefly on the Plan Three, what I liked about that was that you kept the neighbors on the south and west, sort of misleading with lots.
Or lots.
And then, then you got, that would make it more palatable for most of the neighbors. And, you know, realistically, and actually, having the rain garden on each, you know, is.
It's gonna be like a park.
Yeah, we'll see, then.
Then it'll, then it'll be okay.
Well, you know, the. No, I, I think actually it'd be great to have a park there, but the problem is that you, it's becoming more and more an issue, I don't know, we've been watching the news, but people really getting concerned about groundwater and because, you know, the market's bigger now, there's down PFOAs, and you know, there's, you know, their water and Fox News is putting something on Hyannis, but the water's been, my wife was drinking that water like twenty years ago, it was all from the, and we're just about to, you know, we're gonna work, we're probably gonna find PFOAs here, too, but, but we also have some pollution going on already in our act, which. And so, it's in the really, you know, unfortunately, the only current way, I mean, really, the best way is, you know, what they should do is take the, take the decommissioned pressure main, or high pressure main, and dump your stuff into that and get it down to the street, like, that's where, that's where all of this is headed, probably.
It's the stormwater, it's the.
Yeah, yeah, well, you don't mix it together, you separate it, because it's a little separate process, but they didn't, they started doing, already, they're doing that in California. It's, it's costly, but we already have a decommissioned line underneath your, your thing, and I don't think it.
Where is the decommissioned line?
Yeah, that's not the high pressure line that goes to the easement. There's two, there's two lines there, one is the sixteen inch line that is, which is the one that broke. And they sort of, they damaged it, they don't use it anymore, because they don't have any, I'm not so sure that, it's not gonna blow up some other place, they've done some repairs on it. So, so when they're changing out pumps and stuff like that on the main twenty inch line, they flip it over, but that's one of the things is they really are going to have to next year, too. We've gotta run another force main down now.
Well, you know, we can't afford to do everything, okay, but if we're out of the world of, everything is aimed at killing the project, okay? And instead, we're in the world of, what can we actually do?
Yeah.
Let this thing.
Yeah, you're already, you're still.
And, and, and I don't know where we are, but, you know, maybe we're going that way, but.
Actually, I just did reviews on a number of things, I mean, and that's always gonna be an issue with everybody, but, but, you know, that's, you know, and eventually it might be up to the courts or whatever, I hope not, but, you know, it's, if we could, this, I think this worked a little bit better as far as seeing.
It depends, to me, it depends a little on, it could probably help a little with the zone before, I think the zone board is very sensitive to where the neighbors are at. Neighbor, the neighbor's screen, it's on my post, so, neighbors kind of look like, well, maybe they can live with this or live with that, you know, the zone board kinda wants this, you can, you can tell.
Yeah.
They don't want, they don't wanna give us what we want, of course.
Yeah.
No.
Well, they're just finding, finding balance so that.
They're trying to find the balance.
They approach it.
And I'd rather, and I'd rather, I would rather work it out, hopefully, but, you know, at certain points, like, it happens, so it doesn't go.
Yeah. And, and. There you go, exactly.
I don't know where it is, I thought, I thought it was gonna be a disaster.